Good morning, gentlemen. Prayer, please. Play the leadings.
To the light, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, thank you for this evening. I pray that you will help us come to your decision this evening, have the meeting conducted with wisdom, keeping all of your principles in mind. Pray this in the name of your son, Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay, call for meeting to order. Open up R and R and budget hearing, public hearing.
We have to open up the R and R first.
I do it separate?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Glad you're here. I'm opening up the R and R hearing, please, and open it up for discussion.
We'll have to have a vote to open it?
Have a vote to open it? This is my first shot at this here, so.
And you also have to state what it is.
Okay. I make a motion to open up the revenue neutral rate hearing.
Yes.
How about that?
Second.
Got a motion and second, and discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is open. Let me, I've got some, six explained.
We don't have to do that.
I've got a sheet here, I'm cheating.
That's fine, use that.
Uh, we're not making any explain changes to your revenue rate while taxpayers reasonable time to speak.
Which is now.
Pardon?
Which is now.
Yeah, I open the floor to the taxpayers to speak. I recognize Mr. White.
Yeah, I just begin, sir. I believe it would be appropriate for you to recognize what the revenue neutral rate is, the, what the, uh, bill levy ended up being, and the proposed increase in valuation that may is anticipated. I think that's, I think that's.
Yes, I would like you to do that.
I think that's, I think that's.
Appropriate.
Appropriate for this.
Very good.
Question.
It's right here on this resolution.
Yeah, there's a resolution, and so I'm just gonna read it, 'cause it really kinda talks through the whole process about the R and R. And so it says, whereas the revenue neutral rate for county of Bourbon was calculated at fifty-six point five eight six mills by the Bourbon County Clerk, and whereas the budget proposed by the governing body of the county of Bourbon will require the levy of property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and whereas the governing body is holding a hearing tonight, I'm gonna kinda skip over that, because you haven't voted on it yet. It says the county of Bourbon shall levy a property tax rate of fifty-nine point nine oh seven, exceeding the revenue neutral rate of fifty-six point five eight six mills. That kinda gives you like a pre, preliminary idea of what this resolution is going to do, if you guys so choose to vote on that. The amount of tax levied is seven million five hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two, and that gives you a proposed mill levy of fifty-nine point nine oh seven. Last year, you levied seven million one hundred and twenty-eight nine hundred and ninety-nine.
Say those numbers again, that what we levied, or what we are gonna be levying this year?
You are going to be levying seven million five hundred forty-eight seven thirty-two.
And last year?
And last year was seven million one twenty-eight nine ninety-nine.
And that increases due to valuation.
Some of that is to, you're trying to recapture some of the cash reserves, so some of its assessed valuations has, have increased. But a lot of it is your, your, you've got several different things going on here. I can't just say it's one thing.
Okay.
But I'd be more than happy to go back over those if you guys show.
Okay.
Need me to.
Anyone else would like to speak regarding the?
I would just like to hear the percentage of valuation increase.
It's four hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and nineteen thousand.
So that would be over the, uh.
What was levied last year?
What was levied last year of what?
Seven one two eight nine nine nine.
Nine. No, no. We're talking about valuation, not, not the tax levy.
Your assessed valuation?
So the assessed valuation was one four, hundred and fourteen million.
No, that was in twenty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-three was a hundred and nineteen.
It's twenty-one, nineteen, and then it went to a hundred, now it's proposed to be one twenty-six. So there's a seven million dollar increase in valuation. So with the additional mill levy, to sit here and tell us that we're revenue neutral, or that your taxes won't go up, which no one has said yet.
Don't say that, Michael, that is so not true, even for you to say that.
I just said that.
We aren't revenue neutral.
I, that's, I just said that. I'm not saying that you are, but when everyone needs to understand this revenue neutral rate is nothing but smoke and mirrors, and I've told, and you have grieved me on that, that it's totally ridiculous, that when we have a valuation increase, regardless of whether the mill stayed the same, you're gonna pay more taxes.
True, but if, if we stayed revenue neutral, like we did last time, you would be taxing less, because you're not taking advantage of the increase in property values with the taxes. So that's why she said a couple meetings ago, we taxed, we actually taxed seven hundred thousand dollars approximately, less than we did the previous year, because we stayed revenue neutral. So staying revenue neutral, you take, the county takes in less money, which means they tax less.
I, I, I don't think that's the calculation.
Can I get an amen?
Because if, because if, even if you stay, if the mill stays the same, and your valuation goes up, your taxes will increase.
Yeah, but that's not what happens when you stay revenue neutral.
No, that is what happens.
No, it's not. Well, that's what's gonna happen if we vote to not stay revenue neutral.
Which you're gonna have to do, because.
Probably, 'cause we can't even, but we can't even come to the agreement to cut anything, so, yeah.
Well, this is a discussion we could have for later, and I've had this, I said this every year, that this revenue neutral rate was all smoke and mirrors.
No question, no question. The, the simple thing is, the, the simple fact is, we are going to collect four hundred and nineteen thousand and change more than we did last year.
Okay.
That's correct.
And we, we, we would've collected more had we even stayed revenue neutral.
That I don't know.
No, because last year.
No, you stay exactly the same.
We connected, we collected seven hundred thousand dollars less. We collected seven hundred thousand dollars less.
If you take advantage of the valuation increase, your taxes go up.
But you don't take advantage with the evaluation increase when you stay revenue neutral.
I disagree with you.
Right, that's exactly right.
I'll disagree, and we could discuss that later, set a point. We have to discuss now, but I could show you that later.
I would make it. And it's very, it's very admirable, this county commissioners, and it's very admirable that you are trying to keep our taxes lower. And I know that Mr. Beth will say, you read too many newspapers now. In Lynn County, they had no choice but to vote to not be revenue neutral. And the same thing goes for Allen County. And we all know, gentlemen, that it's impossible almost to stay revenue neutral every year, because your salaries goes up, you have to buy equipment, you, there's so many, gas, I mean, there's so many factors that go in here. Anybody that can say revenue neutral is absolutely insane. And what you're talking about revenue neutral, number one, if your revenue comes up to here tax-wise, then you have to cut mill levy here to equal last year's budget to be neutral. That's, that's the bottom line. And I don't, I don't have a problem with people having to increase their budget a little bit, if it's not excessive. It's like Mr. Jim said, Commissioner Harris says, if we do this, we're gonna have cut services. We're gonna have to cut something along the way, you know? And I think you are all going in the right direction, and it's a hard road to hoe.
Yeah.
I appreciate you letting me speak, thank you.
Thank you. It is difficult to work these budgets, because we're estimating what diesel fuel's gonna cost next year, and it's just all an estimate game, and it's really unfair game, but that's the red rules are. And you're right, I'm really proud of the last couple years, we have stayed revenue neutral without cutting services. That says a lot for personnel, our directors, our elected officials, everyone is tightening their budgets, so that's really, that's really a big deal. I hope everyone appreciates that, I do. So, anyway, any other comments from the public?
I, I, I agree, Michael, you know that. I mean, the revenue neutral, and I've been, since I started, blasted, to pique, for their ignorance, stupidity, to pass such a dumb thing. Because it's, it is smoke and mirrors, it's absolutely smoke and mirrors. So to me, the numbers are, we're taking X in compared to last year. It's, those are simple numbers, and, you know, we are, we could brag that we're staying mill levy flat, you know, well, what does that mean?
But that would be a better definition of it than putting up revenue neutral, which has a connotation, that you're being good, when you're really not.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, we're staying, we potentially will stay mill levy flat, which will allow us to collect four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars and change more than we did last year. And that's the simple, that's, what's that?
Because of the increased valuation.
Yeah, 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 because that, and that's the simple.
Which we wouldn't have done if we stayed revenue neutral.
And some, some stuff came off NRP, and there's a few other things, but, so it's not entirely that, but it's, majority of it, my guess is, that. But, yeah, anyway, I, I, I mean, I can't, I mean, everybody's heard me say revenue neutral's a joke, and it should be looked again by our wonderful representatives up north.
Maybe, who knows?
Any further comments on our revenue neutral rate hearing?
Who wants to read it?
So you need to close the hearing.
Yeah, close, I make a motion to close our revenue neutral rate hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And you need to vote to exceed the R and R.
We have to read it, it says, verbatim. A resolution of the county of Bourbon, can, of the count, of the county of Bourbon, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate, whereas the revenue neutral rate for the county of Bourbon was calculated as fifty-six point five eight six mills by the Bourbon County Clerk, and whereas the budget proposed by the governing body of the county of Bourbon will require the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and whereas the governing, excuse me, the governing body held a hearing on nine seven, two thousand twenty-three, allowing all interested taxpayers, desiring to be heard, an opportunity to give oral testimony, and whereas the governing body of the county of Bourbon, having heard testimony, still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the county of Bourbon, the county of Bourbon shall levy a property tax rate of fifty-nine point nine zero seven, exceeding the revenue neutral rate of fifty-six point five eight six mills. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption, and shall remain in effect until future action is taken by the governing body, and adopted this seventh day of September, two twenty, two thousand twenty-three, and signed by the governing body.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number fifteen dash twenty-three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Is there discussion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm back up, I was waiting.
No, there wasn't any.
Okay, okay.
Aye.
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 All very hesitantly, we say aye.
Since you got off the roll call, we already did that, kinda? So we gotta, we gotta sign this one? Is there a second, President? You gotta say?
No, it's the same one you have, Nelson has.
Same one, okay. So we gotta open up another budget meeting for the?
Yeah, you gotta open up the budget meeting now.
Open up the budget meeting.
How do you fill out on this roll call with yes, no, or gonna vote for each of you, please?
It's a learning experience for me, anyway, but, yeah.
This, I, I'm gonna take a moment to say, this is absolutely absurd and ridiculous.
Yeah, it was like a dog and pony show.
With a part.
All of it, all of it, so.
I didn't bring dogs and ponies for both shows, just one.
The state should be embarrassed and ashamed of this.
They should be, they really should.
Do you need the revenue neutral portion of this?
Yeah.
Yes, of what we've just had to do.
Yeah.
And you can put that in the paper, please.
I have the power to do the paper, yeah.
On time, looking at Jason.
Okay. And I'm not sure how they even debated that it was, that it was a relevant topic when they adopted it.
Okay.
Absolutely stupid.
Make a motion to open up the public hearing for the budget.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Discuss the budget if needed. Susan, you have the floor, if we have any questions. Nelson, discussion?
I only, I, I put together a chart and gave it to you guys, just because I think it's important for the, the community to understand the funding for the county. It's hard to compare us to any other taxing entity, because of the way our funding comes in, and it was kind of an eye-opener for me, but when you look at it, sixty percent of our money that comes in is property tax. We have about eighteen percent that comes in through a dedicated sales tax, it can only be used on certain things. And then four percent comes from the state, it's a payment, a reimbursement to us for highway stuff, but again, it's through a tax. So eighty-two percent of our revenue is a tax. So if the cost of supplies and, and, just to keep up with paying people about what other people are paying, you know, you have, there's no other place to go except to the tax. And so when we do get assessed valuations, that's how you guys are able to, be able to continue the same services that you continued, that you had last year, because everything is almost a tax that you deal with. So, I hate, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but that's just where we are. I did also look at, holistically, you know, fifty-seven percent of your budgets are spent on wages and benefits, so that service is about seven percent, and then appropriations out to other entities is about two percent. So, you know, the remaining of that's for contractual and commodities, that's just the day-to-day business. So, that's the only thing I really wanted to talk about, that we hadn't really expressed that way.
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, it's all taxes.
It's all taxes.
Governments don't have money, any money they have, they've taken from someone else. They've taken from people that have jobs and work.
And, and you know, I could say the same thing, like at the, let's just use the city of Fort Scott, for instance, you know, they have a sales tax, but it's not a dedicated sales tax, so they can use it for their general oper, some of it, some of it, they can use for general operations, some of it is dedicated to just streets. But they also have franchise fees, that's a tax, but we, yeah, but we don't have that. And so we, we don't have those additional revenues coming in, we don't provide a lot of services like the landfill, you know, it's just making enough to get by. I mean, we don't make a huge profit off of it, but that's not our intentions. So I, I just think it's really important that we understand the funding mechanism, and it's all taxes. So you guys have a hard job to have to determine, you know, are we gonna continue to provide the same services? It's hard to give employees raises, because, because it's all tax. So you, you, you know, you, you are the stewards of the money, so, that's all I have.
Okay, I'll open the floor to the public for the budget hearing. Mr. White, you have the floor?
Yeah, I, I'll take the floor. I want to start with a point that any monies that is dispersed, that belong to the citizens, I believe, and I've talked to all of your constituents, at least someone in your district, so I'm not just speaking to Clifton, and, for me, I've, I've, I've heard this from others, that we are giving out money to whoever it is, with no expectation of what they, what their goals, no measurable deliverables, no feedback, I mean, when was the last time we heard from the Meals on Wheels people, or the Area Agency on Aging, which are big points that I will get back to? But we need to hear from those people that we're giving those funds to. How are they achieving, or are they achieving their goals that they set forth when we gave them this money? I think we owe that to the people, that you're taking their funds, this commission, and I, I refer to this commission, your predecessors did the same thing, we should be getting feedback from them as to how that's going. We're putting out a lot of money, I'll mention no names, but you all know who they are, and we get nothing back as to what their goals were, what their achievements were, what deliverables we could've expected, what benchmarks we, we apply to the distribution of those funds. It's only fair to your constituents that we provide that information. Now, in your budget, you've moved several items that we had kind of a discussion on, like the, oh, what was it, the pilot fund money, is that what you, what, moved to a, to a contingency, instead of moving it directly to economic development, soil conservation? We've also done this with the Meals on Wheels and the senior citizens money, which we've halved for this year. And I had a discussion earlier in the week with Mr. Beth, Clifton, sorry. And, as I said, we've moved that to one line. It's been moved to from forty-eight thousand to twenty-two thousand for the year, and they're, they're not getting, they're not providing the service now with, with the money that we were giving them. How are they gonna do that for the next year? So I really think we have to revisit that, and I volunteered with Clifton to get into it with Area Agency on Aging, as it filters down to the Meals on Wheels. I mean, I'll bring, I'll bring you a box of those frozen meals next week, and, and open it up fresh for you, and let you all see it. It's, it's sad, what we're trying to feed these people. And I admit, I depend upon it when I'm out of town to supplement, because my mother can't always cook for herself, depending on her, how she feels that day, but I can't expect her to eat that stuff. And I know this is not a discussion, it's just a complaining session, but I, I want you to really seriously think about, we gave a hundred and, or seven hundred and some thousand dollars to an organization, and we have really got no definitive answer as to how that money, where that money went. There was an attempt to, to justify it at the city meeting, and I think they failed miserably, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, Mr. Walker?
I know this is not the normal period, I know this is government, and government's a government issue. But the bottom line is, everywhere I've been, it didn't matter, even I've been involved in corporate somewhat, but the bottom line is, is every department would come in and give a report, you know? How many people did you train, did you stay within your lane, did you stay within your budget? You know, they had measurable things that each department was required to give. And I know we have elected officials here that they can either choose to or not choose to, and that's fine, but what I will say is to justify things, everything has to be on a table. One of the jobs I had was in recruiting, and there was a recruiter, reserve recruiter, and this is back in the day, he actually went in and got gas at premium, and they pumped it. Well, the powers that be, the money counters caught him, and so he got slapped and was told that he had to pump his own gas. Where this is going is, we have an entity that refuses to go to walk fuel. Everything needs to be on the table, and they say that's in the guise of public relation. I got news for you. I pumped my own gas out there, and the places I went, my fourth year out there, I didn't even have to wear a uniform. That whole, I could walk down, it was so bad, that they knew me so bad, that we got ready to leave the town and go on leave, and we're at McDonald's, and somebody waves in the back and says, hey, Sergeant Walker? Well, if you get out there and you actually engage, you can do that. And, you know, it's kinda like the road crew. I know more of them than the law enforcement, not, not wanna know them, but that's okay. But that's what I'm saying, they have to be engaged in their community, and you have to put it all on the table, when you can say forty-five or eighty-five cents a gallon of gas, eh, that works out a lot of money. And other departments, too, you know, how many, how many transactions did the treasurer make, how many did the registered deeds? I mean, you go look at these things, that, you know, how much value are you getting for your buck? You know, those type things.
Good point.
Thank you.
Any other further public comments? And, and?
Dick, he's a brilliant one.
General discussion from the county commission?
Don't look at me. My, yeah, I think everyone knows what I think. I, it, kinda, I agree with, well, actually, I agree with Mr. White for different reasons. He probably, I disagree with most of our appropriations on a principal level, so like I said a hundred times, I believe, I actually believe in small government, which would mean not giving money to all these organizations, which would mean the county not being involved in every aspect of life. So I only want to fund very, very essential and limited county functions. Everything else I would defund. Now, we can't, because of the state makes laws, what we can and can't fund, but people complain about taxes, but then they complain when we talk about weaning ourselves off of these services. So, you know, how long are you gonna falter between two opinions?
When are you gonna get to the point to agree with me?
Oh, you were saying, we, we give all this money, we give all this money out, you know, and you say, we, I want a better report from them. And I'm like, I just don't wanna give them any, money, period. So, yeah, my bad, kinda forgot about you over there.
Well, I think I made the comment, maybe last year before you were a commissioner. You know, the biggest cost to the county is road and bridge, and corrections in the sheriff's department. Those are the two biggest costs to the county. When you talk about taking money from, you know, not giving these other people money, I mean, it's minimal. I mean, very minimal, actually, it will not make a difference. It would, it might change my taxes fifty cents a year. So to make a big difference, we have to talk about cutting everybody, everybody. You wanna make a difference, fine, let's cut everybody across the board, fifteen to twenty percent right now, everybody. That's how you make a difference. You don't make a difference by not giving somebody twenty thousand dollars. You make a difference by cutting everybody, fifteen to twenty percent across the board. That would make a difference. That would change my taxes, but we cannot, and this was before you, we can't sit here and complain. But we cannot, and this, this was before you, we can't sit here and complain. You know, we have to pay "for, uh, mental health and those things. We have to. We have to have a health department. We've already been down the road of having our own health department. Would cost us two or three hundred thousand dollars a year. We pay ninety thousand now? I mean, um, so, and we have to have that. That's required. So to say, to say that, I think you're, I personally think you're out, you're either, either don't know. I don't know how to explain.
I've also said before, it's not about the money. It could be ten dollars. I said a hundred times, it's about the principle of the fact. And changes are made when people change the principles on which they stand. And the principle that we have now is it's okay for the county to give public monies to all a bunch of different crap. That's the principle that I don't agree with.
I disagree with that.
It's spoke, well.
Whatever.
It's evidenced by all the crap we give money to.
Well, I, I guess I don't know what all the crap is, Nelson.
Well, okay.
I mean.
I'm not singling anything out, but the, the fifty thousand we gave away, uh, you know, several meetings ago, Bourbon County Ready, which I don't think, you know, he and I have argued about it before. The government, my mind, is not an economic development, not in the business of economic development or charity. And that, that's, charity is the biggest quote-unquote charity. You know, welfare, E B T cards, state benefit cards, that is where, don't, I mean, talk about the sheriff's office, what about that? I know that's in the state. I know the state.
I said, I said road and bridge, everything. Don't make, don't, don't.
Road, bridge, sheriffs, whatever, those are, those are good legitimate needed functions of the county. I know that most of this stuff is out of our hands and in the hands of the state. But, you know, all we can affect is what we can affect, so.
Well, I'm gonna agree with Clifton on this one. The big money is our correctional center, sheriff department, road and bridge.
I'm not disputing that fact.
The funds that we've discussed regarding the soil conservation, the Meals on Wheels, and our fair board "is about three-fourths of a mill total. So that would, like Clifton said, it would change my taxes fifty cents probably. And I understand your principle of it, but, see, I came from school where sometimes people need help. And I'm sorry, I'm going to help people. As long as I sat here, if the people don't want me to help people, they can vote me out. But if I have an opportunity to give fifty thousand dollars to poverty people "and bring hundred families out of poverty the next twenty years, look at the seed we planted. Now we have three hundred families out of poverty. We bring those kids up. I like feeding hungry kids if I can. And the Ready was all pilot, pilot money, so it was no taxpayer dollars, zero. No taxpayer donated anything to Ready. That's pilot money, year after year. And we'll see some results sooner or later. I'm really proud of what Rob's doing out there. And when it gets to announce some things, everyone's gonna jump for joy and pat him on the back finally. But anyway, it's, it's pilot money, not tax dollars, so I, I understand that pilot money could go somewhere else. Exactly, it could. We all know that. But, you know, I'm sorry, but "the Soil Conservation Board, I, I've spent some time with them the last couple of weeks. And they've agreed, they're excited about us being on their board. I've spent some time with Meals on Wheels. They welcomed us. They're excited about us being on the board. Their fair board said, that's great. We would love to have your participation. Actually, Meals on Wheels said, four years ago, they asked, and they finally quit asking about somebody getting on their board. So, and you're right, maybe we need to get more involvement somehow. Those frozen meals, I don't know anything about them, but we, we gotta do better. If that, if that's what it takes, one of us be on that board.
And I volunteered to get involved and give you feedback, so.
Well, yeah, I, I know, I mean, I mean, I'm not gonna talk about that tonight, but that, it's, it's simple to say "we need to do something about it, but it's gonna take about a half a million dollars to do something about it.
Yeah, it will, so.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Clifton, Nelson? I'm gonna close the public hearing if you're done.
As long as, I mean, that money that we did discuss was set aside and is not going to those entities at this point. It is in a contingency, correct?
Contingency upon us appointing a board member, then we release it? Is that our plan?
Um, you guys can make motions and, and it's money sitting there, so you can make motions in a meeting "if you wanna allot forty thousand dollars to whoever.
Well, they're very eager for us to get on their board and participate. All three entities.
I'm talking about Ready. I mean, we're not, we haven't allocated money to Ready.
No, I was talking about those other three, so. Yeah, and Ready is just sitting there for us to decide in the future, yeah.
When are we making our decision on the budget? Do we have a date set?
Tonight. You're leaving, remember?
Yes.
And this is all about you, remember?
If there is no other comments, that's when you gotta close this.
Yeah, that's why I asked them if they had any other further comments. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Nelson?
Yeah, I mean, my only comment is the government is way too conflated. And, you know, it's not something that we can snap a fingers and get rid of, "but you do have to start weaning ourselves off of it, you know? And, and things have to take its place. I understand that. But we have allowed it to take the place of family government, church government. And it's not, it's not good. We're, we're, it's, it's taking the place of God.
I mean, maybe, 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 Susan, we need to show Nelson that presentation you did a while back before he was here "about how much we actually have decreased and who has raised the taxes in this town. Maybe that's what Nelson needs to say. That this commission has done their job and has started lowering taxes since we got here and before June.
And this, okay, let's, let's continue.
I mean, I'm sick and tired of, anyway.
Okay, then how about we stop being involved in some of the things we're involved in? Like I said, it's not just the money, it's the rules that we play.
Well, but we have different rules. My rules are different than yours.
I said roles, not rules, but yes.
My role's different than yours. So I have a different belief in life than you do.
That's true.
That's why we're all Americans.
You wanna get angry at me for expressing mine, though?
No, I'm not angry at you all.
I will. We all have different beliefs and I, for damn sure, I'm willing to, I'm, I'm wearing a gun and a badge. I'm willing to kill and die for my beliefs. I'm damn sure ready to, you know, get, get complained about for them. So I definitely have.
I'm not getting angry at you at all. You've never complained. You've never seen me angry. Angry, angry.
You've never seen me, you've never seen me angry either. But, so that's my, yeah, that's my belief and, uh, it's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Okay. Any further comment? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Make a motion, close the public hearing?
Close the budget hearing.
Oh, you close the budget hearing and disclose the public discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So is that your motion to close the budget hearing?
Yeah.
I second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next, it says vote on the budget.
So I make a motion to pass our budget, uh, or two thousand, I guess it would be twenty-four budget.
I second the motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Budget passed. Complete meeting minutes from these hearings and Jennifer will do that? We can, we can adjourn, folks.
Uh, there isn't? I guess. You don't have, I don't have one. You don't have one.
I have the resolution for the revenue neutral.
Yeah. Okay, so are we supposed to sign something now?
So you have signed everything? Let me get you the budget and put here.
Not yet, getting ready to.
And this is the budget.
Do we have to make a motion to sign that? Okay, okay.
Also, Justin said we need to clear our desk off at court hearing. Gonna come down here for the A D A? Okay, well, he told me to clean my desk off. I don't know. Thank you, sir.
There's a trash can.
That's where most of this stuff ends up.
Or I did. Okay.
So I make a motion to adjourn this, whatever this meeting was.
I second that.
Got a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor? Aye?